Good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's regularly scheduled council meeting for Monday, June 11th, the year 2018. Let us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call of attendance.
Maldonado. Franciski.
Present.
Walker.
Present.
Vasquez. Garcia.
Present.
Orange.
Present.
Perez.
Present.
Monroe. Medina.
Present. Councilwoman Vasquez is out of town. Councilwoman Maldonado is under duell. First item on the agenda.
Communication from the mayor.
About minutes of the council meeting?
The minutes will be ready at the next meeting.
Okay. Any communications from the mayor's office? Next item.
Communication from department head. Accounts payable warrant 052318cc.
So moved. Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilwoman Walker. To hear accounts payable warrant 052318cc. Any questions? Roll call.
Franciski.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Accounts payable warrant 061118cc.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Franciski, properly second by Councilman Perez. To hear accounts payable warrant 061118cc. Any questions? Roll call.
Franciski.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Garcia.
No.
Orange.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Accounts payable warrant 061118la.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Franciski, properly second by Councilwoman Orange. To hear accounts payable warrant 061118la. Questions on that motion? Roll call.
Franciski.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Garcia.
No.
Orange.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Payroll warrant by weekly 060118.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilman Perez. To hear payroll warrant by weekly 060118. Any questions? Roll call.
Franciski.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Payroll warrant monthly 060118.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Garcia, properly second by Councilwoman Orange. To hear payroll warrant monthly 060118. Questions on that motion? Roll call.
Franciski.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item.
Committee reports.
Do we have any committee reports? Next item.
Board reports.
Do we have any board reports? Next item.
Ordinance first reading. Ordinance 18-0008, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. An ordinance vacating a portion of a public alley pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-3-1216.
So moved.
Second, Mr. President.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilman Garcia. To hear ordinance 18-0008. Do we have anyone here to speak on that?
Good evening, council members. Joe Allegretti, Corporation Counsel. Vacations of public ways is a statutory process, as the council knows fully well. Petition's been filed. The purpose for the... This is the public alley that fronts the Clemente Center. The land of the Clemente Center is situated on, is owned partly by the Department of Parks and Recreation and partly by the Department of Redevelopment. During the last expansion of that facility, the front of the building encroached or was built upon what was an unvacated, still platted alley. This is... The petition is merely an attempt to clean up the property site, get the property under one ownership, eliminate the encroachment. The alley has no purpose as a public right-of-way or a thoroughfare. It's never been fully developed as an alley, but nonetheless, it's still platted that way. The building isn't going to move, so the logical... I submit that the logical course of action would be to vacate the portion of the alley which is described and shown on the sketch which is attached to the application. It's a... In this case, it's a two-step process. It requires a notice to the abutting property owner, which in this case is the Department of Redevelopment, and also publication and holding of a public hearing on the subject in the event the council is interested in entertaining the... And adopting the ordinance. Taking the liberty of scheduling a public hearing for two weeks from today.
Do we have any questions? Councilman Garcia.
How do you vacate an alley that's there right now? What's the plans to do? Block it off or what's the issue?
It's not really an alley that's used as a paved alley or that runs behind residential lots. As indicated on the sketch, it's not... It serves no public right-of-way purpose. And it apparently did not when the building was constructed or added on.
It's just not a sketch.
Yeah, we don't have the sketch if that's what you're... The sketch.
Councilman, again, I also responded to the question that you posed to Mr. Allegretti. You've not... This is a legal procedure only to correct the plat books of the city. This particular alley, Joe, if I'm correct, dedicated on the plat books, but it's not used as an alley. So you're not unusing an actively-used alley. You're really just correcting the legal description. That's all you're doing. I did review the petition and the ordinance, and unless there's some policy reason or substantive reason that the council members feel this should not be done, I do recommend, after reviewing the petition and the ordinance, that it be done to keep the cities... Basically, you're keeping the city's legal records correct, is what you do to conform with the existing position of the building itself. That's all it is. You're not in any way harming any access to the public in any way, shape, or form.
In fact, one of the allegations in such an application, as in this case, is that you represent to the legislative body that no one will be inconvenienced by eliminating an existing thoroughfare or a way of... A means of getting around. And of course, streets and lots are created by... Under the subdivision control ordinance, by the recording of plat of subdivision, and that's what this was. It was fine when it was laid out, but I think, and I wasn't around at the time, I don't know if anybody was, but during the last remodel of the Clemente Center, the building was expanded out onto dirt that was not controlled by the city, but rather on a public right-of-way. And I'm sorry about the sketch. I will... I have everyone's email, and I will attach it as a PDF. Just a simple... It shows, and the stretch of the alley being vacated is only the width of the building itself. It's not any... Anything too dramatic other than that. It's because it's only to accomplish the resolution of the encroachment on a public right-of-way.
Because I know the alley you're talking about, and it's east and west, and north and south. Usually, the one that goes along First Street is supposed to stop there, and then you can go either way, but they use the parking lot to go through.
Right.
That's the spot you're talking about.
Yes, exactly.
Mr. Allegretti, so basically, it's the front... Be the front of the Clemente Center and the parking lot that, at one time, was an alley.
And probably, it might have been used as an alley before the Clemente Center was constructed.
And that alley actually ran all the way to Deodore.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
Is it your request that the council, if it is wished, should pass this on first reading?
First... Or first and second, and just so that perhaps the council, if it's inclined, can take the matter up two weeks from today for final passage after holding a public hearing.
We have a motion on the floor to hear it on first, and we'll do that and schedule a public hearing for the next council meeting.
Yeah, there's no urgency for this.
Any more questions for Mr. Allegretti? Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, roll call to hear on first reading 18-0008.
Franciski.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes, and motion carries. Next item.
There are no ordinances on second or third reading. Resolutions... Resolution 18-0007, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of East Chicago authorizing a temporary transfer to a depleted fund to facilitate demolitions funded by the State Hardest Hit Program.
So moved. Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Orange, properly second by Councilwoman Walker. To hear resolution 18-0007. Questions on the motion? Councilman Garcia.
Yeah, anybody to talk about?
Good evening, council. James Fortada, Building Department. This is in reference to the Hardest Hit demolition. This would allow us... The transfer of this money would allow us to have a cash flow where we would be able to pay the contractors prior to obtaining the monies from IACDA. So we'll submit the claims to IACDA, so it will be all reimbursable. So we're requesting that this money be available. We are in the process of starting demolition on the 19th for Hardest Hit, and we will need, because of our timeline, to demolish these properties almost at a weekly basis in order to be able to do... Fulfill our commitment until December 31st, 2018. This will be all re... This resolution will be repaid by December 31st.
Councilman Garcia.
Yeah, so you have to demolish these properties, then submit the bill to the federal government?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call to adopt resolution 18-0007.
Franciski.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. And motion carries. Next item.
Old business.
Floor is now open to old business? Do we have any old business? Councilman Garcia.
President, I got here, opened this envelope, and I haven't got a chance to read the whole thing, but it's got some East Chicago crime stats. I wish the police chief would have been here to present these and answer any questions. We had police chiefs in the past that came before this council and gave us the crime stats and answered any questions that we had, but it's a shame that we get this instead of him showing up and answering any questions that I got, because I got plenty. Also, Mr. President, I understand we lost some more officers in the last couple of weeks. We continue losing officers. And I'm hearing a number that we're at 70 or 72, way below that our numbers and morale's low. I'm asking if we could have a public safety meeting, maybe to find out what's going on? I don't know if HR has been doing an exit interview on these officers, because I understand most of the officers that's left are young officers that they swore in maybe three or four years ago. Majority of them are gone. I'd like to find out why they're leaving, so I don't know if HR's done an exit interview, but maybe we could find out in a public safety meeting.
Any further old business? No, sir. We'll move into new business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Orange.
Well, for new business, I would just like to congratulate the 2018 graduates from Central High School. It was 243 graduates. From my understanding, that's the biggest class they've had in the last couple of years. I congratulate them. I'm not always a fan, but I think that if it's 243, they did a pretty good job, and I would just like to commend them on that. Also, I would like to commend the East Chicago Police and Fire Department. We had an explosion on the 3900 block of Evergreen, and they went door-to-door to make sure everybody was out of that house and that... Because they were in immediate danger because they didn't know where the gas was coming from. So I would just like to commend them, and also, I'd like to send them a letter thanking them for what they did to make sure everybody was safe in those blocks.
Any further new business? Councilman Garcia.
Yeah, Mr. President, I understand there's 24 cameras going up in Roxanna. I don't even think Roxanna has 24 streets, and they're getting 24 cameras. That's pretty... That's an awful lot of cameras in one area. And to me, I think that oversteps the boundaries on some things, because I don't know who's monitoring these cameras, but 24 cameras in Roxanna, they don't even got that many streets. I know we have some other areas that is being hit by crime that's pretty hard. I know this Memorial Day weekend, at the address 3819 Alder, there was 14 shots in that area that day. Also, on the 25th, around 3622 Guthrie, 12 shots. At 3583 Guthrie, 13 shots. Then on Main 28, on 45th Block of Indy, 17 shots. There's a lot of things going on in the city, but we get 24 cameras in one of the safest parts of our cities. But I don't know what's going on, and these are the questions I got that we need to get answered. I know I need to get answered, because I know the store on the Broadway Shop got robbed. It's a yearly thing, she's getting robbed, and I don't know what it takes to get a camera put up on that corner. Don't know what it takes. But we get 24 cameras put up in Roxanna. You know? And I don't know what it is, but we need to also question who's monitoring these cameras? These are high-end HD cameras, you know? It might infringe on some people's rights, you know, who's coming and going out of their homes? Who knows? But I'd like to know who's monitoring them. But these are the questions I think we need to also get in a public safety meeting. If I need to write a letter to see who's monitoring these cameras, we need to. That's all, Mr. President.
Councilman Franciski.
Well, first of all, Councilman, they're already up, so it's not like they didn't put them up yet, but you can never be too safe. I mean, maybe you need to see what's going on in your district to find out instead of worrying about other peoples. I mean, whether it's the Roxanna, the second district, the third, the fourth, they're all going throughout the city. Maybe you need to sit down with somebody and find out where they're going up in your district, that's all.
Councilman Garcia.
Thank you, Councilman Franciski. And you made my point, not knocking... This is not knocking Roxanna whatsoever.
It sure sounds like that to me, but...
It's not, so please don't take it the wrong way. But we got some bad places here in the city that need some cameras also, so... And there's no knock on Roxanna.
Councilman Perez.
I just want to talk a little bit about the police situation. Councilman Garcia, I did speak to the mayor on Wednesday of last week about that very same issue, manpower. And he assures me that the hangup is at the merit board, and the process that we have with the merit board slows down the hiring process. It isn't like the old days where he could just go out and hire 10 police officers. They have a system that they got to go through, and spending 23 years on the fire department, I know how lengthy that can be. I don't know the exact numbers, but I do know that he is aware of the shortage. He assured me that last week, like I said Wednesday, I think I spoke to him, and claims that they are on it. So we'll wait and see before we start calling a public safety meeting and see what we get from the merit board and see how many candidates they have before them, how many are on the list, and how they're being processed. I just don't want to be quick to jump to these meetings every time that we have a perceived problem. I'm not saying that it's not a problem, I'm just saying that we have to make sure we gather all the facts before we start calling meetings, and then the press is going to want to know why, what happened at the meeting, where's the police situation. So I did know that there was a shortage. I was informed of that shortage. I did speak to the mayor, and he assured me that it's the merit process. And I'm telling you, as a former fire chief, when you have a merit system in place, there's just guidelines and rules that you have to follow that really slows you down. I know that that's not comforting to the community, but that's the case as I understand it.
Councilwoman Orange.
Well, one thing about it is, it proved from the last budget hearings that we had that we have the ability to raise the salary, if that's the case, the reason why people are leaving. It ain't... It's not just about low morale. It may be about salaries, it may be a lot of different things, but as the council is... Councilman Perez has pointed out to us, we have the power to raise their salaries. So if that is the reason why they're leaving, then maybe that's something we should look into this next budget hearing. I have no problem with that, if that's what's going to keep people, but I don't think that's all the reason why people are leaving. But it could be, but we can rectify that, and then we'll see what the next step why people leave.
Councilman Garcia.
Yes, and I totally agree with what both of you guys said. That's why we... That's why I asked if there was an exit interview done, to find out, you know, what are the particulars. So if we could ask, you know, if there was an exit interview, that's fine. Also, just getting back to the other issues that if you call a public safety meeting, you know what? The district can know, you know, how many cameras are on being hurt, she's getting, how many cameras are on being, the problems that we have throughout the city, and that's the issue, because, you know, I know, I care about the fifth, you know? There's a lot of problem areas that's there, and I know there's problems with six, there's problems all over.
Even in Roxanna, there's problems.
Yes, there are. Councilman Franciski, I know there is. This is not a knock on Roxanna, all right? But I think we all have our problems, and we all need cameras also.
Because you got a lot of stats for the sixth.
Councilman Perez.
And Councilman, I applaud you. You know, you have to stand up for your district, but I've never experienced where I've picked up the phone and dialed a department head and asked him what's... I think maybe, did you try Kevin Klosek and ask him, what's... You know, is there something coming up in your district or something like that? Maybe that would answer your questions. I don't know. Maybe it won't, but I know that the first step should always be to try to reach that department head that it pertains to the issue that you're talking about and see if you can get an answer there, and if not, call the mayor. And, I mean, that's what I did with the police issue. I got the calls and, hey, you know, we're down to this, and I called him up. Said, hey, you know, where are we at with this? And that's when he explained the merit board, and they went through... I guess they went through a process of picking testing companies, and so all of these things take time and draw back, but I think that, you know, communication goes a long way if we try to just reach out and see whether or not we can get the answers from the proper department heads.
Councilman Garcia.
Yes, and I totally agree with you. I've been trying to get these crime stats for six months, and I haven't gotten nothing. And the thing is, this could have been nipped in the bud. I could ask chief, you know, is there any plans they put any cameras and those kind of questions there, all right? But there's been no response from him to me. So my part has been there.
Do we have any further new business? We're now going to move it to public expression. Do we have any comment cards? The chair will now accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I think someone wants to speak.
Yes, could you fill out a comment card, please?
Oh, you gotta use your name.
Yeah, we need your...
Or my face.
Well, we...
Because I know your...
You have to fill out a comment card, sir, with your name and your address, and... If anybody else wishes to speak before us, now's the time to fill out the comment card. Mr. Lopez.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but hearing about all these cameras, and I live on the 34th Block of Elm, and I'm a little nervous. There's more traffic on Guthrie than there is on Broadway and Main Street combined, 24/7, with those blaring cars of their subwoofers, and then they come down my block... seven, with those blaring cars of their subwoofers, and then they come down my block, as soon as they get to the middle of the block, they start playing their music, and they're going slowly down toward Lincoln School. Soon as they get there, boom, they shut it off. I know that the whole area there, because, uh, I remember an article that was on the paper where the little boy got killed, and they said he shot himself in the head, and this and this and that, and a lady made a comment, I'm quoting her, "Everybody has a gun here on Guthrie." That area, anytime I call, when I hear shots, and I made one comment to a dispatcher when we used to send the messages here to East Chicago, I said, "What happened? The shot spotter's broken?" Because there must have been like eight shots, and I don't hear anything. And then there was just recently where, I guess supposedly in the paper, three gunmen were shooting there on the thirty-four block. It was my wife's birthday. It sounded like a machine gun. I mean, these guys must have timed each other, and, and that was in the afternoon, and I tell my, and, and, and it's weird. And, and in the past, I've, I've asked the officers, the police department, and the police have spoken to them through the years, and they go, "Well, your street is a dead-end street, so we don't come down that way." And I said to myself, "No wonder they use our street as pickup or sta, or park there, and somebody comes by with another car, and they exchange whatever they're exchanging." And, and, and it's, and it's frightening, and I don't want to be chased out of my house. I was born here on that block, I lived there, and, and it's ridiculous. I'm seventy years old, and I'm, right now, I'm shaking like a leaf. Okay, but I don't understand why our area is designated for all these guys with the subwoofers. It seems like it's, it's, it's a, it's a designated area for us, but you're right, we need cameras, a lot of cameras over there, because there's so much activity there. Plus, we need signs like I've seen in, in Highland and in, and in Hammond, where it has this big sign that says, uh, ordinance or, or no loud music, or you'll be whatever, you know, ticketed or whatever. I, I can't, I was going to take a picture with my iPad to show the council, the, the signs that they got on the entrances, and I think we need one when you get off of Klein, when you get off over here on, on Michigan and Guthrie, and one coming into, uh, from Dicky Road. We need those kind of signs here, because if they can have them and put them up, why can't we? And we're supposed to be, uh, uh, I hear all this conversation on, and, not conversation, but reading in the paper constantly. Civility. Civility is a physical thing. It takes a lot of effort, but when people start talking about just the word civility don't mean dilly. You got to practice it, and when you, when you're conversing with somebody, it's like they're staring at you like, you know?
Thirty seconds, sir.
Okay. But that's it, but we do need cameras, but you're right, we need cameras in, in, in that, in those areas, because for some reason, I don't know why, I get all that commotion over there. Sorry. I'm glad I stayed.
Jose Gonzalez.
You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Lenny Franceschi has helped me in every way, and I respect him highly, and he's trying to help me. I'm trying to get things done, and I'm going to do it real quick, fast and in a hurry before I get married. I'm a single man. All right. Lenny has helped me out in more ways than one, and here I am today to state my claim. All I ask, and Lenny been trying to help me so much, and I really appreciate him. I just want my alley fixed, because I hurt my leg, and I don't want to go there with, fall in a lawsuit to the city, and Lenny knows the situation. But here I am today to state my claim. I don't want any problem, so now here, I'm going to walk away, and I'm, I, I, I'm going to cut it short. Thank you, Lenny.
That concludes public expression. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second, Mr. President.
Roll call to adjourn.
Franciski.
Sir.
Walker.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. Meeting's adjourned.